Good evening and welcome to the February 18th, 2025 Eugene City Council Public Hearing. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the instructions listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials page of the City of Eugene website. There are four public hearings on tonight's agenda. Please note that members of the public who sign up to testify may speak only to the topic that is the subject of the stated hearing. For those wishing to testify during the public hearing, please fill out a request to speak form available on the city's Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. These request to speak forms will be used to generate the order of speakers and correctly enter speakers' names into the public record, and we will accept request to speak forms until 5:35 PM. As a reminder, the council's meeting rules of conduct include no flags, signs, louder disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. Please keep the room quiet and respectful for all speakers, and you are welcome to wave your hands in silent support. Additionally, we encourage those that are ill or who have had close contact with others who are ill to join our meetings remotely rather than in person. We also encourage attendees to spread out within the public meeting space and wear a mask if you would be comfortable doing so. We have some available in the lobby if you need one. In case of a medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind staff located to your left on the west side of this room. And in case of emergency evacuation, emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room and the double doors near the front of the room. You can also exit out onto the patio and use those doors as needed. And with that, I call this meeting to order. The first public hearing on tonight's agenda is Public Hearing for an Ordnance Concerning State Traffic Laws. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce this topic?
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Manager Kristi Hammett, tonight, this first item, the purpose of this public hearing is to consider amendments to Eugene Code Section 5.005 by re-adopting the state's statutory traffic code provisions. The proposed ordinance updates the Eugene Code to include changes made during the 2024 session by the Oregon State Legislature. Because 2024 legislative changes have already gone into effect, the ordinance provide for an immediate effective date so that the traffic laws that went into effect on January 1, 2025, or before can be prosecuted in Eugene Municipal Court. Action on the ordinance is scheduled for February 24th, 2025.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing. Staff, can you please share a list of the speakers on the screen and announce the first speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one more minute till the sign-ups close, but at this time, there is no one signed up for that hearing.
Okay, well, we will wait for that one more minute.
Hello, Mayor. I can confirm there is no one for the first public hearing.
Thank you, staff. With no speakers for this hearing, I now close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from City Council? Then with that, we move on. Second public hearing on tonight's agenda is Public Hearing for an Ordnance Concerning Stormwater Management Facilities, Chapter 7. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce this topic?
Mayor, the public hearing, this public hearing is regarding a proposed ordinance to amend the standards for stormwater management facilities for public improvements in the public right of way in Eugene, Chapter Code 7. The amendments are being proposed due to requirements of the city's 2021 National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. These proposed amendments are for public improvements only and do not apply to development permits and building permits on private property. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing. Staff, can you please share a list of the speakers on screen and announce the first
Thank you, Mayor. There are no speakers for this second public hearing.
Thank you. Then I now close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from City Council? Thank you all. The third public hearing on tonight's agenda is a Public Hearing for an Ordnance Concerning Stormwater Management, Chapter 9. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce this topic?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is regarding a proposed ordinance to amend the Eugene Code, Chapter 9, stormwater development standards, which apply to land use applications and development building permits. The proposed land use code amendments to the stormwater standards are being made to comply with the city's 2021 National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit and the Federal Clean Water Act. On November 12th, 2024, the Eugene Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that the Eugene City Council adopt the proposed ordinance to the stormwater development standards in Eugene Code, Chapter 9. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing. Staff, can you share a list of the speakers on screen and announce the first speakers if we have any?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker for this hearing. I'll read my little spiel now. If you have signed up to speak via Zoom, please take this time to ensure that your screen name in Zoom includes your last name and matches the name you used to sign up to speak. Let's see. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first and only speaker for this hearing is Dane Butler. Dane, I see you online. I'm going to allow you to speak. You should be able to speak now, Dane.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm, dear City Council and Mayor. My name is Dane Butler from Ward 4. I'm speaking on behalf of the Western Oregon Builders Association and then also our 45-year-old local homebuilding company. We've been a part of this process for probably the last three to six months and want to make sure that we're reiterating that our main focus was to make sure that the city's approvals can still be relied upon. What our legal opinion has always and still is, is that when the city specifically addresses stormwater in a PUD, a subdivision, or a plat, then those are relied upon for the development and the infrastructure, and when the city feels like they can change their approvals, then those properties are damaged. I felt like I've provided many examples to staff of various PUDs and subdivisions where we were given specific approval in regards to stormwater, and when we cannot rely on those approvals, neighborhoods are damaged. WOBA, Western Oregon Builders Association, has never seen in our review of the MPDS permit or received from the city that reversal of our approvals in our existing process would be in violation of that permit. We don't believe anywhere in that permit DEQ requires the city to not uphold their existing legal binding approvals. WOBA is not looking for exemptions and was on board with the expiring of what we deemed historical lots that don't address stormwater in their approvals, but we are not on the same legal page in which our current PUD and subdivision approvals are no longer valid when stormwater has been reviewed, inspected, and approved by the city. We 100% still believe that the city has the ability to adhere to their own approvals and update this ordinance in a simple and efficient manner. Thanks, Dane Butler.
Thank you, Dane. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. I now close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from Council? I see Councilor Clark in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Manager, I would love to hear someone from staff answer Mr. Butler. I have to say that what I understood, and I read the email that he sent as well, is representative of the homebuilding industry in our area saying, hey, we're making it more expensive and more difficult to get stuff built. And this is maybe one of the top goals of the city right now, is we've just been shown, hey, we got to get 26,000 new houses built. Making it more expensive and more difficult seems like a bad idea to me. So I'm wondering if someone can, staff can, address what he said and why we shouldn't do something instead or make a different decision rather than the recommendation to make it easier and less expensive to manufacture homes.
Councilor Clark, thank you for the question regarding Mr. Butler's comments and email.
Yeah, so there was a lot in there.
Yeah.
I'm going to respond, it sounds like you'd like me to respond to the legal issues that Mr. Butler raised. I can't speak to whether it would be more expensive, that sort of stuff.
I apologize for interrupting. Can I just say, is he correct in saying that honoring our previous approvals would not endanger our permit?
Whether it would, I don't think it would. I don't think that DEQ would ever tell the city that it can no longer honor a legally binding relationship, a contract, or an approval. And nothing in the DEQ permit says that we need to no longer honor something that we are legally bound to, and nor would we do that. That's not a proposal that's been made, that we should disregard previously approved systems. If they address either the code that was in place at that time, and if they don't, if they're not adding more impervious surface that triggers the new code, they can still build what they propose to build. Most of the time, when, as you know, when a subdivision or PUD is approved by the city, it is the creation of lots and maybe a road, a street, and then those lots are sold to someone who develops them. And there may have been, at the time of the subdivision approval, a stormwater system that was built to address the impervious surface created by that road system, say. And like in the old days, it would probably just have been, Doug can respond to this, but you know, the gutters that you see, the curbs and the collection systems. Over time, due to NPDS permit requirements, the city has added new provisions. And when any, when those things are developed out, it's the building permit, the person who's developing the lot, that they have to comply with standards, like how tall can your building be? How far from the, you know, the setback, you know, the standards for construction? And it is rare, though it sometimes does happen, the City of Eugene honors, if that subdivider or PUD developer actually included a stormwater system that addressed, let's say, let's say the standard was 10 for flow. I don't even know what that means, but let's say that. If they addressed that, that was the standard at the time, when a development happens in that lot, and we included that approval in our binding agreement, we always do a binding agreement with every development. It's called a development agreement. And if it says this development has been approved and is already pre-addressed all stormwater for the site with, by a 10 for flow, they get to do a 10 for flow. Most developers don't do that because they don't know how much impervious surface is going to be created with all the development. There probably are some, I'm certain, I'm certain that Mr. Butler and some of his examples is pointing to a development agreement that we would honor. That still will happen, but if there is a subdivision that was just lines on a map and streets, our NPDS permit says we need to, if somebody's creating more than 1,000 square feet of impervious surface, comply with not just flow control and oil control, but treatment, the quality. And we have to require that to comply with our NPDS permit. I do, I do take issue with an assertion that our NPDS permit doesn't require that.
I couldn't hear you, that last part. I'm so sorry.
I do believe the city's NPDS permit requires quality control aspects, you know, treatment of stormwater.
Is that a shifting standard over time?
It began in 2006 or 2014 in Eugene. In 2006, the stormwater standards didn't include any standards for quality, for treatment. In 2014, treatment was added, and at that time, the council decided, okay, well, we're going to honor, we're going to include a provision that addresses, that allows people who got approvals before that time to not have to do the quality control. So now it's been 10 more years. And there's a state law that gets involved in that, too. State law says that a city can't have a code provision that allows a developer to go back and use and rely on standards that are more than 10 years old. But if it's within 10 years, they can. So because of how these dates have kind of lined up, we're a little past our 10 years under that statute. There is information about this in a memo in your packet. It's difficult stuff, but...
As I'm not a developer or professional in that field at all, I'm likely to develop questions that'll need further expanding on before we get to approval, which, what, this is probably a week, I don't know the date in front of me.
A couple.
Will there be folks on staff that can answer those with direct answers?
And we'll probably do it in a memo because it is complicated. Or, or you can, if you have individual questions, you obviously, you can always reach out, yes.
My questions almost always involve further questions, so thank you for that. I appreciate that.
We're available to you, yes.
As you know, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Gross.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for working on this. My questions are along the same lines as Councilor Clark's. I think most of them got answered there. So I want to talk about a concern that I have. You know, first of all, yes, we have to provide for water quality, and there's state law that we need to comply with. I get all that, but one of the things I frequently hear from builders and developers and even just private parties that are trying to develop land is confusion about shifting standards and at least the perception of shifting standards. And I'm wondering, what is it that we can do that helps make the conditions to develop more predictable? You know, predictability is, lack of predictability can drive costs, and I agree with Councilor Clark, at a time when we are trying to produce more housing, desperately need more housing, we need to find how we best can work with our development community. And I also understand it, it's a continuum, but my hope is we can find some balance more in the middle on this. So I would be interested in some more discussion about this as well before we vote on it. Thank you.
I would point out, that has been a value of this council for a really long time, and I would say, you know, off the top of my head, 90%, if not more, of what you have done to change, to approve standard, changes in the standards for development in the last 10 years have been the result of mandates from either the state or the federal government... 10 years have been the result of mandates from either the state or the federal government in one way or another, and mostly the state, that you haven't had a lot of choice, maybe some choice in the standards you select, but in some cases, not even as to those, but you've been mandated to do this by higher authority.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, I think we've all watched that happen, and for me, that's kind of frustrating, too. I mean, it doesn't seem like the phase in, phase out timelines that we're given frequently by the state are, they don't feel adequate to me, especially as we work with our community. But I would also be interested in what outreach we are doing with our building community as well, so that, you know, they're feeling heard and that they know we're listening to their concerns and trying as best we can to navigate around them. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Hey, Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, actually, I think Emily actually addressed my concern, my question, which was, how many of these were originated by Eugene and the city and our staff versus mandates from the state or the federal government? And what I hear was almost all of them, if not all of them, in this regard, are federally mandated, which we didn't have a choice, we just needed to implement them. Not that I object to them. I think having clean water and clean stormwater, which ends up being our drinking water, is sources, and downstream from us, is a very important goal that we all should be heralding. So I, for one, am glad we did it. And probably, but it's not as an action the city does. We often get saddled with actions that are mandates that we don't have any control over, and everybody says the city did this, the city did that, when in fact, we didn't do it, we're just complying with either state or federal law.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, we will move on to our final public hearing for tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing on safe parking and tent sunset extension. Assistant City Manager, would you please introduce this topic?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is an opportunity to hear from the community on the draft ordinance to extend the sunset date for the safe parking and safe tent ordinance by 12 months to the end of June 2026. Following council direction in 2021, the city created new shelters to address a dramatic increase in public space camping during the pandemic. More than 250 new shelter spaces were created using one-time funding. Extending the sunset date is needed to operate these shelters into the upcoming fiscal year. Action on the draft ordinance is tentatively scheduled for February 24th. Thank you, Mayor.
I now open the public hearing. Staff, can you please share a list of speakers on the screen and announce the first speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker for this, for this final hearing tonight, and that speaker is Jack Boyzen. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Go ahead.
Right. Hello and thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's a joy to share with you all this evening about the impact and incredible programs set up through the city of Eugene and with St. Vincent de Paul. My name is Jack Boyzen. I'm the Director of Operations at SVDP. We have been running the 410 and 310 Safe Sleep Sites for over three years now, and it has grown into not only the highest performing program we have, but also the primary sites meeting two unique needs within our community. First, the 410 Garfield Safe Tent Program. It began as a primary transition site for the homeless site at Washington Jefferson. With the fantastic support of the city and Vinnie's staff, that program has grown into a calm, trauma-informed shelter, where on average, about 40% of the 92 clients at any given time sheltered there are employed and saving for housing. Her current housing rate out of 410 is about 39%, with 49 people becoming housed out of the program so far this year, and another 8% exiting to long-term positive outcomes such as assisted living. Our current, oh, the privacy and peace allowed from that program is a perfect fit for individuals who are working jobs and working hard to get out of the brutal cycle of homelessness. Next, the 310 Garfield Safe Parking Program has been one of the few sites in Eugene where unhoused individuals living out of their vehicles can safely be sheltered. The situation is a growing percentage of our local unhoused population. We've all seen the vehicles around town, and while 310 Garfield can't hold all of them, it's a unique program in this community for taking vehicles that would otherwise be camped in the street. We've built this program with the amazing support from the city and on land generously allowed by LTD to bridge the unique needs of individuals living out of vehicles on the streets in our communities with achieving positive housing-focused outcomes. We have operated 310 Garfield as a trauma-informed program since its beginning, and recently have implemented a time limit on stays in the program. This has increased housing numbers in the program rapidly in the past few months. Vehicle programs are very hard to find widespread funding for, which is why there are not more programs to help this increasing population of the homeless. The safe parking program's continued success in increasing housing numbers can continue to be the local option to assist the sizable portion of our unhoused neighbors who own and live out of their vehicles. We thank the city's homeless services team, we thank you all, and we at Vinnie's are committed to continue working hard and providing these excellent housing outcomes.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. I now close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the City Council? Councilor Clark and Councilor Groves, thank you both for the reminder. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, what's the financial impact of extending the sunset?
We have funding secured through the end of this current fiscal year and hoping to continue to secure more during this legislative session that we're in currently. And so we're in a good, pretty good place right now to be able to continue that funding with one-time dollars that we have available.
Help me understand what "secure" means in this particular case. There's a dollar amount that we're spending. It's coming from what fund? And we're doing that? I'm looking for, because we're having so many ongoing budget-related discussions, where we have working room and where we're getting ourselves into a further issue or problem in the way I would define it, so...
If you're okay, I'd like to invite Reagan Watchus to kind of explain, or Will Doudie, whoever, Reagan, would you like to come up? She can give you more intricate details about our funding strategies.
Sure.
Hi, Counselor.
Thank you.
So for the, I'm Reagan Watchus, I'm the interim Homeless Services Manager at the city. We, for, there are three sites currently operating under this ordinance. Two of them are funded through the state's all-in funding. That was part of the governor's executive order, and that is part of the governor's budget to sustain the current level of funding for next fiscal year. So we have funding through this fiscal year, and what's in front of the state legislature right now is funding for the next biennium. And the governor's budget includes money to continue those two Safe Sleep Sites. The other Safe Sleep Site, the 310 Garfield Safe Sleep Site, we are continuing to utilize one-time funds that were enabled. It's a combination of one-time funds that have been enabled through direct ARPA allocation and through a state grant for shelter operations. And we have money through this fiscal year. There is, part of the package in front of the state legislature could allow some funding from the state next fiscal year, but it's not part of that, the governor's budgeted amount, which is really about sustaining the state's current all-in shelters, if that makes sense.
So at this point, we have funding enough to fund everything through the end of June of this year, but then unless state funds come through, we have no funding for anything after June, and that's the extension of the new sunset?
The sunset extension isn't extending funding, it's just extending the ordinance under which these shelters operate.
Right.
And yes, what you said...
I'm trying to mix the two so that we can make a better decision.
Yeah, and what you said, I believe, is correct. We have secured funding, and then we would extend those one-time funds as far as we could into FY '26, but we don't have secured funding for the next fiscal year.
Or a sunset that goes that far, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Groves?
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the additional on the funding. And my first question, which I think just got answered, is why are we only extending the sunset for one year? And I'm assuming it's because it's attached to funding, correct?
Yeah, we're being conservative, trying to have a lot of communication with our providers also to help, while we try to secure longer-term funding.
Very good, thank you. And just a comment I want to make, I know this is expensive. I know that we don't know where the future funding is going to come from. At the same time, I cannot imagine losing the Safe Sleep Sites. I've watched the transition in my own ward in west, southwest Eugene, where it had the feeling of being overrun, with people trying to survive on the streets, that were also affecting neighborhoods, the parks, and our West Eugene business community, that's a very big economic engine in our community. So I shudder to think what would happen if we had to open the gates and turn just over 1,000 people, more people, out on our streets. So I'm hoping that we can continue to scrape together with some help from the state and the federal government. I have less confidence in some of the big government helping us now, but you know, we've got to find a way through this. And I do appreciate you speaking from St. Vincent's on this, and I think you've done a great job on this, and I will add, I think everyone village has done a great job in some of the other sites that we have out here. It's been nice seeing different approaches to this, but the main thing is getting people off the streets to where they are safer, have a better chance to stabilize, and hopefully not just survive, but eventually thrive. But it also helps reduce the impact on our community, which is incredibly important and probably the number one thing I hear about still to this day, even with all the good that's been done. It's still a big, big issue here in the community, not just for those experiencing homelessness, but for the people that are just trying to navigate and live their lives as well. So thank you for this work. I'll be interested to keep learning new information on it. I recognize it's kind of, we're scrounging around trying to figure out how to make this work, but thank you to everyone involved in this.
Counselor Krasinski?
Thank you, and thank you to staff and to the folks who have been working so hard on these sites and this service that has been very critical in our community. I want to make sure I kind of understand what's in front of us. This ordinance doesn't have anything to do with money, that what is happening is that there's language in our code that says you can't have a Safe Sleep Site that's larger than a certain size. And what this is saying is that council can by motion designate sites where you can go beyond that certain size that's written in our code. Is that basically what this is doing?
Counselor, this is just extending the timeline for the existing services that we have in place, but...
So is it extending council's ability to say, we want to designate this site to have 40 sites as opposed to seven, 40 tents as opposed to seven? Or is it like reauthorizing the specific sites?
It's not necessarily about reauthorizing existing sites, although they are called out, I think, in terms of the capacity that they have. But we would, if we had additional funding and there was interest in expanding, we would be able to come back and have more discussion about that. But I don't believe that you would have to do another extension on this. It would, if there was more capacity added to the system for the next 12 months after this expires and the new year starts, it would continue, we'd be able to continue to expand. Does that make sense?
So if we don't, if we let the sunset come into place, what that would mean is that the sites that currently exist would no longer be compliant with our code that says... Okay. I'm wondering, I'm assuming the sunset was put in place because it was a new program, we wanted to see how it was going to work, we wanted to see if 20 sites or 30 was too many? Given that the programs won't necessarily continue unless the funding comes through, is there any reason to keep sunsetting it that way? Or, you know, would we just say like, this is a thing that we can do going forward if we choose? Maybe in the future, there'll be different funding sources, and then we're not constantly having to reauthorize?
I'll ask Emily if I need some assistance from a legal perspective, but as long as we have the tool to expand, grow, sustain for the next year, or however long council decides to either eliminate the sunset, extend the sunset longer, we'll be able to work within those parameters to continue to create shelter opportunities.
Okay. So the sunset isn't set in stone that we have to get rid of this, and if we do get rid of it, it would reduce our ability to respond?
That's right. The council could at any time ask for this to be brought back and consider making it permanent. There are, you know, lots of issues you'd want to consider in doing that, but yes, at some point, you certainly could do that, and you don't have to wait until this one sunsets.
And to be clear, that making it permanent doesn't necessarily mean that we are making any individual site permanent, or that we are making, committing funding to any of these sites?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yeh?
Yeah, thank you. I actually had a question similar to Counselor Krasinski, so thank you for asking that. You know, we have a lot of things to do, and coming back constantly to redo this seems like, you know, maybe that's one thing we could take off our plate. Obviously, if funding became an issue, we would have to make adjustments, just like any program in our, that the city does. So something I think we should consider looking at in the future. But also, since St. Vincent de Paul is here tonight, I just wanted to thank you so much for your work and all of our providers. Our Safe Sleep Sites are one important component of a larger ecosystem in our community, and if you take one of those components out, the system suffers overall. Not everyone is ready to go straight from living on the street into an apartment, and these Safe Sleep Sites and other parts of our shelter ecosystem are enormously important. And also, just for your staff, I know it's a very hard industry to work in, maybe industry is the wrong word, but it can take a toll, and people deal with a lot, and so thank you for being willing to step into that space and do that hard work. On top of all that, having an uncertain financial future for your programs only adds to that stress, so we appreciate you being here tonight and talking with us. Yeah, and I'm in support of moving this forward, obviously, from what I just said, and I'm looking forward to it.
Seeing no other comments from council, I will just add my appreciation to St. Vincent de Paul and to our provider network echoing Counselor Yeh's comments about the many different organizations working to help to support our community in this way and to support our full community through the provision of these services. It's incredibly important. And to some of the discussion earlier, a reminder that at the very top of our city's statewide lobbying efforts this year is to establish long-term sustainable funding for our shelter system, both the emergency and the expanded alternative site programs such as these. So this is ongoing work and very much a current event, and very appreciated. So thank you. And this concludes our agenda for today. And with that, I will close the February 18, 2025, public hearing, and we are adjourned.